So I'm gonna call the regular Board of Education meeting to order. It is now six fifty-three. Please rise for pledge.
Pledge leads to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, in the name of our justice for.
Roll call, Kelly.
Ms. Betterfield?
Ms. Betterfield?
Yes, here.
Mr. Kaseley.
Excused.
Ms. Lynn?
Here.
Mr. Okausti?
Delayed.
Stadler?
Here.
Mr. Singh?
Here.
Mr. Wilk?
Here.
Ms. Huer?
Excused.
Mr. White?
Here.
Alright, so we're starting out, oh, fire exits, Matt, I'm sorry.
Uh, exits are in the back of the LGA.
Alright, we're gonna start out with the board goals and during the agenda setting meeting, Matt and, uh, Matt reviewed and we had discussion about how to go forth with the conversation for lining up the goals. So Matt worked hard on the document that he sent to everybody and it really outlined the strategic plan. So you'll see a real heavy, uh, heavy hand of the strategic plan. You'll notice that there are, um, you know, the attributes and then our board goals from last year, um, which in our agenda setting meeting, we felt didn't have to change too much, maybe just make them more measurable. So if you look at the third page, you'll see that there were, uh, major actions and then key, uh, metrics and we were like thinking that the conversation could go around and Matt's gonna chime in and kinda lead this, uh, this conversation more this year was to, uh, look at the key metrics and assign the key metrics to the goals that we come up with. I know that there has been talk about a sustainability goal, whether we wanna incorporate that at a new goal or incorporate it into our existing ones, but, um, you know, Matt and I both felt when we were at the agenda setting meeting that the goals kinda fit really nicely with the strategic plan that was developed and that was a large group that developed that, um, along with the mission. So we really didn't wanna change the goals too much, but maybe look into adding that sustainability aspect to a goal or to have a separate goal for that, knowing that would give us six goals, which six is a large amount, but it's something that I think could be doable because we are just assigning a metrics to goals that we would be carrying over from the prior year. So, Matt, I think I kinda summarized it.
Yeah, and I just had a very quick overview. I will not link her on each of these slides, but I just wanted to, uh, to do just a quick overview. So, uh, we have our mission statement that came from our strategic plan work, meaning the challenge for preparing your student for learning life and work beyond school. I'm always looking for ways, I'm gonna make that slide a little fancier before the beginning of the school year, but I'm always looking for ways, 'cause I realized, uh, you know, the document I gave you, the slides that I'm about to quick through really briefly have a lot of words on it and it's like, you know, we have the skills and the attributes and the board goals and the strategies and the actions and it starts to kinda swirl around in everyone's heads a little bit and I'm always looking for ways to just sort of bring focus to the whole thing. And I think these three words sum up the strategic plan, the board goals, a lot of our strategies, care, connect, engage. Those, those words come from both the, you know, the work of the Strategic Planning Committee last year, but it also comes from all of the student focus groups we did last year. I did a number of them, uh, from fifth graders all the way through 12th graders where really talked about the instructional side of things. Eric did several student focus groups that focused on, uh, really the code of conduct kinda side of school. And I think these words sum up, um, you know, over probably close to 200 students that we spoke with, uh, things that they were interested in either seeing and appreciating and certainly wanting more of. So, uh, for that, you know, the word care comes from the culture of care, which is one of the board goals, uh, but essentially, uh, finding ways to build structures in our classrooms, in our, uh, in our schools, uh, to focus more on, you know, students getting to know each other better, adults getting to know students better, vice versa, and, uh, and certainly also supporting all the great work that's already happening in this area. For instance, we had, we just had 20 teachers do the responsive classroom training at the elementary level, had a number of teachers at the secondary level do restorative practices training. All of that leads to that getting better at building community, uh, improving the conversations that we have, the dialogue that we have amongst, you know, everyone in our district. Connect. I think this was a big one that came out of those conversations with students. Uh, they're very desperate to connect their learning to the real world, uh, to connect their learning with each other, uh, and just to sort of connect also, when I say real world, but also connect to the next steps, whether it's, uh, an elementary school student going to middle school next year or a high school student entering the world of work. So that connection is really huge, that desire to connect. I always remember the student I spoke with that, uh, talked about a club and it was a club, um, that we kind of reignited this year with some board support for this past year and, uh, the passion that a student talked about in the, in the multicultural club at the high school and that they did a survey of students and they were making plans from that survey. Those are the kinds of things and there's dozens of examples of those, the kinds of things that students want more, uh, that connection. Then the last word is engage. I think that's at the heart of the strategic plan, engaging in critical thinking and problem solving, creative projects. Uh, kids talked a lot about how much they, or our students talked a lot about how much they like simulations, whether it's, uh, one, a technology simulation or an old school simulation, but our students always appreciated, uh, when it wasn't just the transfer of knowledge, but the ability, the ability to apply that knowledge, uh, and also field experiences. And so we're, we're looking to expand in all those areas. So again, it's not a deficit model, these, these words and this plan and these goals are not because these things are absent in the district, but just simply things, uh, that we wanna strengthen for all of our students. So, uh, these are our belief statements, I'm not gonna read them, but again, diversity is our strength, providing a culture of care and an equitable education for all students in the district. The skills and abilities we wanna see in all of our graduates, focusing on communication, problem solving, creative critical thinking, collaboration and independence and digital literacy. Attributes and dispositions, uh, focusing on empathy, self-regulation, citizenship and community, curiosity, wow, curiosity, wonder, awe, imagination and adaptability and flexibility. Again, our, our, the consultant we worked with, uh, really talked about how this is a great focus to have, but this is not the part of the plan you want to be measuring. The first part, the skills part is the part you wanna be trying to measure with your assessments. Then we have the board goals. I know you've been reading these in preparation, so I'm not gonna read them out loud. We have an excellence goal that's focused on, uh, curriculum, uh, an equity goal, uh, that is focused on both celebrating diversity and providing an equitable education for all. Fiscal goal, having a transparent budget process that also looks at things both in the near and long term. Communication goal, which is essentially, uh, building trust in the district, uh, sort of amongst all levels. And, uh, and then that culture of care goal, which was one that the board, if I remember correctly, added last year. And we were very appreciative of that addition. We think it, the culture of care honestly is a nice foundation for all of this work. I was reading a study just the other day that positive, positive attention, and this is from adults in the world of work all the way down to kindergartners, positive attention is 30 times more powerful than producing the outcomes that you want to see in people than giving negative attention or negative feedback. And so when I think of that culture of care, I think it's building a culture of positivity, uh, where students are getting that positive attention from each other, they're getting it from their teachers, administrators, and other staff members, and we're also taking care of the people that work here as well. So the main strategies, these came from the committee last year, uh, create a common definition of student engagement. And so that's one that we are starting in our engagement institute next week. We have all of our administrators, a group of, uh, great teachers that we're gonna sit, you know, work with our consultant for a couple days to come up with that district definition and talk about how to broaden it out, uh, to have an assessment philosophy that supports, uh, those skills that we wanna see in all of our graduates. Uh, design and implement professional learning strategies, which we've done a lot already with our PD plan for this year, and also revise and realign our curriculum framework to, to again align with the strategic plan. One note to the board, these, all of these four strategies, as they should, are very focused on student learning, again, as they should be. One thought I have, and again, you know, I think it always boils down to those three words, it boils down to the actions that we do, but these four strategies were adopted by the board and something to think about is adding a fifth strategy that's focused on our facilities, whether it's designing, uh, you know, the 2020 capital project, um, you know, implementing more sustainable, uh, both sort of on the curriculum side of things, but also the, um, facilities and energy usage in the district. Again, you know, we're fine moving ahead with that, but it could also be a strategy. Major actions that we have going on this year, uh, for our team and for, for the entire district, working on that student engagement definition and then trying to roll that out, getting that equity, getting the last sort of tweaks and bugs out of the equity report card and having that, uh, up and online in the next month or so. Uh, moving forward, this responsive classroom restorative practices and dignity framework, uh, professional development model that we have a three-year plan for, the reading assessment system that we, our goal is to have it go all the way through the middle school where we know where our students are, uh, with, uh, on grade level reading, getting the business program off the ground at VHS, are building leadership teams, something I haven't spoken about a lot, uh, but we created a teacher, a site and a position, three in each building, I think four at the middle and high school, that they're gonna be working with, uh, the administrators at the school and also involve some parents or community members, uh, to have each school working on the strategic plan moving forward and working on all these things we're talking about today. Uh, I mentioned our capital project design, the next one, we're very focused on obviously the one that's happening right now, but that next one is right around the corner. One-to-one Chromebooks at the high school, next generation science standards, possibly a sustainability plan for the district and diverse hiring. Now, there's other major actions or there's other actions, but these I feel are the ones, hopefully none of them are surprise to you all, but these are the ones, uh, that we have already really started moving forward, um, some more than others. And then, uh, metrics and this is, the, the actions is still, even though we were moving ahead on all of those, um, they're kind of in the draft mode, 'cause I, I would love to get feedback on those from you. The metrics, uh, some of these would be new, some of these we already have, graduation rates, of course, course enrollment data, I would add to that extracurricular enrollment data as well, uh, our discipline data, that includes suspensions, in-school suspensions and, um, silent reflection room data. On-grade level reading data, student climate survey would be new, uh, and we are either looking to develop one ourselves or, um, or contract out to have one and, and staff diversity is a, is a, is a metric that we also currently track. And then back to these words, again, care, connect, engage. I, I will spend the next couple of weeks trying to home that message a little bit better than I'm doing tonight, but we're very, very excited to be starting the school year with this really powerful foundation. Uh, like Anthony said, I think the, my personal opinion, I'm gonna go back to them, the board goals, they're on these three slides, so I can hop around. I think the board goals are powerful. I think you all spent, um, really productive time working on them last year. And I, I would recommend that we not make major changes for the reasons Anthony stated I think it's worth stating again. I think they fit really nicely with the strategic plan, they fit really nicely with the major actions. At the end of the day, it's all about those actions and, and the things that we're working on this school year. So the only thing I mentioned, and I mentioned this in the email to the board a couple of days ago, is we did create a district sustainability committee, or I did, um, in my reflections on the year. Probably I would not necessarily highlight as one of my great successes, uh, 'cause it's probably an area that I don't have a lot of expertise on, but there certainly is a lot of community expertise. And so there's lots of different ways to look at that and I, I think the work has more power, uh, if, if the board either incorporates it into a goal or the board adopts it as a goal, it's obviously completely up to you and we'll keep working on some of the things that we started talking about at that committee level last year, uh, but it's something to think about. So, uh, I'm gonna kinda throw it back to you all and, uh, my whole team is here, so we can all be a part of the conversation as well. Anne Marie's up here. Bill Rolone, our new assistant superintendent is joining us tonight.
Welcome.
And Eric Wright is here as well, so we can jump in as you see fit, but, and I also am happy to kinda stand up here and hop around to a slide that you wanna tease apart a little bit. Anthony talked about, uh, matching metrics to board goals and, uh, I think we can certainly do that and, uh, we'll be taking notes and we'll try to revise this, 'cause we're gonna try to finish this conversation at the next board meeting.
I, we wanna make major grounds so that we could have something probably to adopt at the next board meeting.
Great.
So before the start of school year, we have that, the board goals done before September, so then the school year's starting, they could be known and the district, uh, administration could really filter it down as to what the district goals are gonna be and with these, uh, the action plans, you know, the major actions and stuff that would take place.
And, you know, a couple notes and then I'll be quiet. Uh, we are working with a, uh, company that makes a dashboard for a strategic plan and so, uh, the, the verbiage of major actions comes from them and I like it. And so there will be, uh, later in the fall, um, a, a public dashboard and a internal dashboard about our work on all of these initiatives, which we're excited about. In terms of communication, I have, uh, all of our staff, or we have all our stuff back that Tuesday after Labor Day, um, which my family pointed out to me just the other day is three weeks away. It somehow seems like it should be or could be longer, but, uh, it's three weeks away. So we have everybody together where Anthony White is WordPress, if you're able to come back, uh, talks a bit about the board goals and then I try to flesh it out and, you know, do a version of this, uh, for the whole staff. We ask our principals to come back to a board meeting in the fall slash winter where they talk about what they're doing in their individual buildings to try to move this work forward. Uh, and we also, just on the, uh, visuals end, we're, uh, once we get the board goals finalized, we wanna create, you know, again, some posters that have some of these, like the skills and attributes and some of the strategic plan together with the board goals. And so we will work on that as soon as we finalize this.
So the question I have is, everyone comfortable with moving forth the goals that we developed last year and we can assign that and possibly come up with one other goal on sustainability? Or do you wanna try and incorporate sustainability into a goal? Me personally, I feel it would be easier to add a goal for sustainability instead of trying to incorporate it into already well-written goals.
It's also another thing that, uh, Dr. Landau mentioned, which was having to do with facilities, I think, and, uh, I thought about that, it, those two go together pretty well since a large part of what you do with sustainability, not all of it, has to do with our facilities. And, uh, I remember back when we were doing our initial board training, there was discussion about how many goals should a board have and there were different opinions about that. And at that time I thought, what would my number be, there would be too many. And I said, you could probably get me up to seven, but I'd never go to eight and I'm comfortable with five or six. And I think that's kinda the range that we're in. So my feeling is, uh, we could certainly add another one. I, I don't see it fitting easily into any of these others, I agree with you, it doesn't, uh, doesn't line up with you with those and you'd start to diminish them if you tried to monkey around with it, 'cause they're pretty clear what they mean right now. And I agree, they're, they're good to go with. I can't say I've done the, the final, uh, word-by-word analysis, but they look very familiar and very comfortable. So I would say the, the best thing is to try to craft another goal that incorporates sustainability, does it work also with, with facilities? I think perhaps, uh, our superintendent might elaborate a little bit upon what he was thinking there, it was mentioned briefly in an email. If you could, uh, tell us what your thoughts were in that direction.
I, I think my thoughts started from, uh, quite honestly, started from this, uh, Invisio software that we're working with to do our strategic plan. And so the major actions, we divide up amongst the four of us on the executive team. And so we all work equally hard and when we were, when I was listing all the major actions that were sort of more linked to the strategic plan, I was realizing that a lot of the work Anne Marie does, um, wasn't in the strategic plan and I, I was kinda thinking, hey, that doesn't make sense, our strategic plan should incorporate all of the work we do as a district, you know, both in the classroom and all the things we do to support us in the classroom. And, and then also, I think, uh, I think we all see the connections with, uh, having powerful learning spaces. You know, the sustainability thing, you know, in my personal opinion is, I mean, it's something that, uh, at a technical level, I need to learn a lot more about, but it seems, uh, like it's a necessary direction we need to take. So, that's where it came from for me is, uh, you know, I'm all about moving all these major actions forward and so it may seem sort of technical, but I was creating this thing where it was all instructional. And, and it kinda dawned on me that like creating the next capital project plan and moving forward the sustainability plan were like outside of all this, which to me didn't feel, uh, what's the word I'm looking for?
Holistic?
Integrated?
Integrated.
So, so that's kind of the long or short version, like I, I, I want to feel like, even though we all, we know we're all contributing to it, it, it would make sense that it's like visible to the community, to, to, you know, the internal and external community that like our, all the work we're doing, all of it comes from this, you know, that the capital plan is not just this thing we do outside of the strategic plan. And you all have, you know, challenged us a lot, there's a lot of thoughts about this next capital plan, I won't, I'm not, I won't get into those tonight, but, you know, I think there's a lot of thinking about it and I think having some board, Anthony, what do you always say, the 30,000-foot view? I think having some board thinking at the 30,000-foot view helps us. It, I, I'll be very honest, it's helped us, uh, with our equity diversity work, uh, having the board make, you know, the strong statements that they've made with the board goals that helped us when we did the strategic planning to do those belief statements that came really naturally from the board work. So, you know, to the cynical person, all this stuff is just a bunch of words, um, but I, I really think these words really matter and, uh, having a board state the importance of something helps us move the work forward.
So, um, oh, Anthony, did you wanna go?
No, go ahead, I'll go after you.
No, go ahead, it's fine.
Um, what is the, when is the, when do you, when do we wanna decide on this, um, sustainability goal? Tonight or next, next meeting or?
I think Anthony said, if we were going to add it, we'd wanna make a good deal of headway tonight so that we're, we're working with a sort of, you know, fuller draft for the, as we.
So hopefully we could clean up any loose ends at the next board meeting and look to adopt during the meeting.
Thank you. I have, I have some ideas, but go ahead.
So, this discussion kind of happened later this afternoon and, um, I did have a good bit that I wanted to contribute to it because I've been serving on the Sustainability Committee for the past year. I think that there's, I, I sent an email, I, I don't think anybody's had time to really read it, but, um, I, I think there, there's not a lot of need to recreate something here. There's a program called Sustainable Schools New Jersey, it's been around for several years, they've made huge headway in New Jersey, they're in 335 districts, they're a certification program on the Sustainability Committee, we were looking at something called Green Ribbon Schools. A lot of the, um, same metrics for Green Ribbon Schools applies to Sustainable New Jersey, but then you can also use, there's another certification that you could go for, we don't even have to go for a certification, but there's sort of a language that's, um, already exists that's pretty straightforward. If you go to Sustainable Schools New Jersey, there's a map of all the participating districts and you can click on the, um, schools and then they have their, in their profile, it says what their board action was, because in order to participate in Sustainable Schools New Jersey, you have to pass a board resolution. So in that they, and it's, they're all very similar, I think they give them template language to work with. But just one example that kind of overlaps with many other ones was, um, use best practices to create a healthier school climate, improve educational programming and conserve limited financial and physical resources. And then there's all of these actions that fall under that and, um, there's, there's points of entry that overlap completely with our strategic plan and our goals. So I included, in Sustainable New Jersey, they have like a dashboard where you could look at what each thing is worth, each action, and I just included the diversity and equity actions, just because that's something that we've been working on as a district and you can see that sustainability isn't, it, it does, facilities are a part of it, having a cleaner, healthier, safer environment are a part of a facility's goal, but it's how facilities would affect people or, or the way that you align resources affect people in your community. And the belief in sustainability is that diverse systems are stronger systems and so that if you have a diverse population, both economically, racially, ability, gender, then you have a strong system. Um, so their, their diversity and equity actions were, um, accessible communications, breakfast after the bell, which I think Karen does do something like that.
Yes, she has.
Diversity on district task forces and committees, which just means that you're pulling in from community members, students, every, pretty much everything we're trying to do. And as I was kind of clicking through all the different actions, whether it was communication, diversity and equity, um, we're doing a lot of the work already. It's about capturing it under one umbrella. And I thought the broad language of, um, let's see, where did I go back to it? Implement best practice, so here's another one, implement best practices that lead to cost savings and energy, water usage, garbage bills, improve efficiency and waste, free up money for classrooms, um, those are, that's language we could use, that's a little bit more kind of meat and potatoes and less, um, but pretty much in their program, what they do is they create, um, they create a green team in each building, which is, falls under, we could put a goal under the leadership teams that are being created in each building to look at those practices as well. I don't know if, um, so again, the one that was use best practices to create healthier school climate, improve educational programming and conserve limited financial and physical resources.
I think that's a great starting point, I was just writing it down.
Okay.
Anybody have anything else to add to that piece? What conversation?
I, I agree with, um, Kristen, um, and I, I mean, thank you for the example from New Jersey. Uh, I know New York City schools, they don't, it's not a goal, but they have, um, three bullets for their public school sustainability. The first bullet is making school buildings eco-friendly and efficient. Second bullet is inspiring students, teachers, parents and school communities to take part in environmental programs. The third bullet is promoting everyday practices that benefit the environment. And there's also Putnam Valley School District, um, they, they have an article, uh, The Green Schools Kidos Quarterly, um, with the Greens, um, they showcased Putnam Valley on some of their stuff. I couldn't find their goals to see if they've put something in there about that. Um, also, you know, also I think curriculum's a point too, but I think we already have curriculum as a goal, so I have no doubt of that.
Well, we, it would be in the goal because it's, um...
I like that, it crosses over. It crosses over to the fiscal, it crosses over to the curriculum and it crosses over to the physical aspects of the district.
Right.
But when it says, I, I like it too, for the record, but when it says improve educational programming, like in that example, do they mean specifically through facilities development or do they just mean as a?
No, it's curriculum, but we, but we're working with, I mean, part of what we used for the framework this past year was the Green Ribbon School and that has three pillars and one of them is curriculum. I sent you a sample of wellness, I don't know, I'm sure you didn't have time to.
Yeah, I think I, I brushed through it.
Yeah, it was, I just sent it to you so that you could see, because one of the things we've been, we've talked about a few times is, how does this even overlap with wellness? And I was struggling with how, I was like, it, it does.
Yeah.
So on their, um, unsustainable New Jersey, they, they had said, um, and is an active school wellness council that proactively works to promote and advocate for student health, student and staff health, healthy school environments. And they recommend, there's like the CDC has a self-assessment and a planning tool, there's also the school health index and you learn how to develop, um, a school health improvement plan that can further your sustainability goals. And, um, there's all sorts of metrics they can use, that's sustainable, your, New Jersey uses, but we could have our athletic director look at and see if we can incorporate, I, I, I think a great example of how, what this looks like is actually a lot of the things that they're doing at Sargent. You know, there's, they, they put in like a Bluebird, the PTO put in a Bluebird Walk, they have these Bluebird boxes all around, it's a big campus, the kids can all walk around there, there's.
It's working.
The sensory, the sensory garden, which is sort of meant to use nature to help kids regulate themselves, so it has all five senses stimulated, but it's using the natural environment. They're thinking of doing like a nature-based kind of playground and, um, and things like, in terms of culture of care, it could be as simple as looking at your purchasing. terms of culture of care, it could be as simple as looking at your purchasing to make sure you're using chemicals that are not highly toxic because that affects your staff's health. And that's something to think about in what they're breathing in and what, how that impacts their wellbeing. They have a lot of that information on the Sustainable New Jersey site. And they all have to pass the same tests of eliminating viruses and, you know.
Can I propose a text for a sixth goal? The headline, we have headlines here like excellence, equity, fiscal, communication, culture of care, so the headline could be spaces and sustainability. If you like alliteration, at least. V C S D will foster the practices of achieving environmental sustainability and creation of effective learning spaces. I think they kind of go together. What do you think?
I think it's great. I don't think it's just limited to physical space though, that's the one thing. And I do think that capturing resource use is a critical part of it.
What I wrote down, based on the conversation, your email was, I had the headline sustainability, Beacon City School District will engage in using best practices to create a healthier school climate, improve educational program and conserve limited financial and physical resources. I think it covers the spaces, it covers the physical, it covers the educational aspect.
Should we be careful to say healthier and say the healthiest possible or something like that? I don't know, healthier seems.
Like we're not healthy now.
Yeah, or like we're constantly, I don't know.
Well, healthier, I mean, I agree, like it's, it's tricky because I was looking through the site, it can mean like improve, increasing your use of natural light. It can, it mean putting more plant life in your classrooms or, you know.
Our kids do exercise breaks.
Right.
It just seems weird, yeah.
Maybe it's just healthy.
I mean, and the other thing is, oh, healthy, so healthy. Yeah. Um, Karen Begano is already, I mean, when we were going through in the committee, there's, it's not so much about instituting some of these actions, it's capturing what's already happening. I mean, she's trained staff, they've gone to a farm to table immersion, a farm to school immersion up in Vermont, that was all her initiative, she won a grant for it. We have Hudson Valley seed, you know, gardens at every elementary school, now we're going to be moving into the middle school. It's mostly about capturing the story of what's going on here already and recognizing that it fits under this umbrella.
So I'll write up something and I'll have Kelly send out or Matt, someone send out the, the goal and then we could look at it at the next board meeting. To continue the conversation, let's look at the key metrics that Matt provided and if we have any others, then we can apply them to the goals that we already have, including, keep in mind the sustainability one as well in drafts form. So for excellence, um, Matt, your input would be grateful here too, like what metrics do you think that we should be using to measure this, uh, measure each goal?
I think there's going to be some crossover between excellence and equity, but for excellence, I'd be looking at graduation rates on the whole, uh, on grade level reading data. Those honestly, I mean, you know, this is just my initial draft, there's, there's lots of other assessments that we use that we can incorporate into that. So this is a little bit of a brush stroke here. For equity, again, I, I don't want to totally separate because that's all obviously intertwined, but you're really looking at course enrollment data, the student discipline data, uh, and the student climate survey and staff diversity. So I, I kind of feel like excellence and equity obviously are intertwined, you know, you're not one without the other. And so, uh, and so, you know, these, these major metrics, most of which are incorporated into the equity report card, which we're working on sort of debugging a couple of the tweaks before we can put that out. This student climate survey would be a new one for us. We have not gathered that in the past. That actually, uh, we discussed that in one of the diversity committee meetings this past year and there's a lot of positive feedback about that one. You know, we've been trying to capture student voice a lot more, we've talked about that with our student focus groups, having the, you know, student advisors to the board, all kinds of examples, but that still is collecting, you know, data from some kids, not all. And so the climate survey would capture a wide, you know, a wide number of our students. So that would be a new one for us. So I, so those are my initial thoughts, that's maybe not like the deepest thoughts in the world, but I also think this, uh, this Invisio program we're working with is going to help us connect the metrics a little bit too. And we're just, right now we're focusing with them on the actions part and then the metrics is the next thing we're going to be focusing on. Does anybody have any metrics that they are looking at for the specific goals or?
I do. For, um, it, it's not really well thought through, but one thing that occurred to me during graduation, it came up during a couple of the speeches, was that it repeatedly, and maybe it's just a standard thing kids say, but, um, you know, there were, many of the students who spoke said, I didn't get to know everyone here, I didn't meet everyone, I don't know all of you. And how big is our graduating class?
Yeah.
Two hundred. So I, I went to, I graduated with four hundred, over four hundred kids. And I, I feel like I knew everybody by the end and it was, maybe that was just personality, but then there's possibly.
There is that.
Sure. But, uh, but I think also, you know, I, I'm married to somebody who went to high school and so I have another metric and I think we've, some of us have met him and he's not the same personality type as me. And he, you know, when I asked him, I was, do you feel like you knew a lot of people when you left school? And he said, yes. And it made me wonder how many opportunities there are for students to overlap with each other, um, whether it's they worked, they were in a club together, they worked in a project together, they volunteered.
Well, the course enrollment data, I should have added a few slashes, it would include extracurricular data as well and, and we have all of that.
Right.
The student climate survey, now I know the one that I've used in a previous district.
Anthony, you might need to mute.
The student climate survey specifically asked questions like, do you have an adult or adults in the building that you have a trusted relationship with? They might also have similar questions about peers, you know, it gets at that, where you're speaking about, like I'm going to a high school that's not all that large.
Right.
Is there a group of people that care about me?
Right.
Whether they're my peers or adults in the building?
Do I feel connected?
There should be.
Right.
That should be 100%. Uh, and, and you know, but that is a, that is a very worthwhile metric that we're not collecting. I don't know exactly what it says about peers.
Right.
Uh, but the adult one is really interesting to us because, I mean, you, you see national data, not every, you know, student in a high school feels like.
Mm-hmm.
I'm saying this in the broad sense, you know, feels like there's a bunch of people on their side.
Right.
They obviously want to change that if that's the case here, but we don't have a number to that. We may as well uncover that this year.
Yeah, and I don't know what that metric would be for that, like how you would include that in a survey.
I mean, we could ask the, if we, you know, if we designed it ourselves, we could figure out a way to do it. If we work with someone to design it, they may have a bank of questions that get at that. Uh, but I, it's that, uh, it's that, you know, go back to that word connect, that connectedness to your school and however you feel connected is incredibly important. So there's a lot of research that says it's extracurricular, so it doesn't have to be a sport. It can be theater, it can be music, it can be the club.
Right.
Right? But it doesn't, you know, it doesn't have to be one of those, it could be this teacher that you feel really cares about you and you care about the subject and the person. But that, getting at that student connectedness is really important. Uh, we have, you know, our high school principal really spends a lot of time focusing on that, uh, but we don't collect it. And I think it, to me, like, I'm going back to a diversity committee meeting several months ago, but when we talked about doing it, like the reaction to it was like, oh my gosh, like we don't, no one knows what, no one knows what our number is there.
Right.
I mean, you could make guesses at it, but it's just.
I feel like we, um, we hear about often, we, we guess at the, for the voces, students that they don't feel, they don't feel a part of the community, but it, that, we're basing that on either anecdotal data or guesses, it would be great to actually know if they have a sense of connection and belonging to the school community, whether, even though physically they may not be present all the time, or what would help them if there's like onramps to feeling more connected or like a wish list. I mean, that would be an open end, that's hard to measure, but.
Yeah, no, I, uh, we're, um, we're excited about figuring out a way to collect that You know, one thing we could do, just looking at the time and understanding how we use it, we, we could do a little bit of attaching metrics to the goals just over the next few days and send it out to you, you know, and.
Okay.
Cause I'm not sure what a metric would be for the transparent budget process. I mean, I know some, some districts do a survey at the vote. Have we ever done that here?
No.
You know, like you, you vote and then you fill out a little survey about the, you know, I, you don't necessarily get the best information from that because not everyone does it because they're in a rush or whatever. But, you know, I'm not sure how we collect data about the transparent budget process or a metric.
That was the hardest one that I had.
The vote passes.
I mean, for communication I had, we could look at the superintendent blogs, the verbal calls, the community forums and aspects, see how collected data, how many of those we do throughout the year, um, how many times we invite as a board, we have students come for recognition or employees come for recognition and stuff. So I was thinking we could collect that data piece for that, um, communication piece.
Yeah.
And for the culture of care, I had the student surveys, the suspension rate, the restorative, like we're going to be doing restorative so we could say, how many restorative circles did, did we do?
Yeah.
Um, and the district and stuff, so we could collect that data to see how we're fostering that culture of care. But I think it would be great just being conscious of time and I know that we have to do the public forum for the code of conduct, um, is if we could assign the metrics and then we, at the next board meeting, you guys could rework it, you'll get it in plenty of time, you could rework it and see where you thought they fit or if you want to add something to it and then we'll be good to go.
Okay.
Sound good?
Sounds good.
You guys good closing this aspect of it?
Yes.
All right.
Thank you all.
All right, so the next part of the meeting was the public hearing on the code of conduct. We don't have anybody here from the public. So we're not going to hear from anybody from the public tonight, but is there any questions that any board members had about the code of conduct?
Uh, I was glad that, uh, Matt, I think addressed in his message to us about clarity, hearing from administrators about clarity on the dress code. Cause I, I do think that that's going to be something where I think our, we're, we're very cautious not to put, we, I feel like this, this document was designed very carefully not to seem judgmental of, you know, and allow for more sort of student agency and respect, but I think that some clarity looks like it would help parents and students and administrators in knowing the choices that are available to them.
That's what I was going to ask to make sure that communicated and some people don't have to read all the words and try to guess, you know, maybe this, I know it's just got to be examples of like a card here or something like this, not this, this, you know, that kind of. Yeah, we're, we're required, uh, not, I mean, not that we're just doing it because we're required, but required to do a simple language version of the code which Eric has. And so that will have that. The dress code was our attempt at doing, attempting to do a gender neutral dress code. And, um, so, you know, everything's kind of, uh, I, we should always try to be on our learning edge as leaders and I think this, I don't want to speak for you Eric, but like this for both of us, well, I'm speaking for you now. For me, uh, this was something that was like a little bit outside of my comfort zone and, but we did a lot of research on it and, uh, and then the more we sort of learned about it, the more it, it made sense. So we had a couple of questions like what does fabric in the front mean? So we're going to provide some clarity with that and that is not something that the board has to have like a vote on, you know, we checked with our attorneys on that, that's something that, you know, administration has the ability to do. But interestingly enough, I, uh, over the past week or two, I have some far-flung friends around the country and a few of them have kids in schools that have this gender neutral thing and I just was sort of talking to them about their experiences and they were like, we didn't even know, it existed after the first day of school, after it got unveiled. The reason I say that is, is, you know, I think it's a respectful, uh, dress code because it's gender neutrality and quite often we don't end up enforcing a lot of what's in the more old and traditional dress codes because people feel uncomfortable singling oftentimes a female student out for something they're wearing. So anyway, it's a long version, we are, we are going to provide some clarity. We also are going to see how it goes, right? If there's issues, like, you know, we try to be really responsive leaders, we want, you know, the same at all levels to be responsive and if there's issues, we can make some tweaks to things and changes, but, um, and, but we will provide that clarity. And that's going out to student handbooks and we also will put a communication out to families at the beginning of the school year with it too, with like the simple, so was it called, simple language version?
Plain language.
Plain language, plain language, sorry. Are you able to put in a milestone or somewhere to do a assessment or a review with the staff, say, okay, what's our feedback and do, you know, can we, or do we need to make changes mid-year or, or? Yeah, for sure. I mean, Eric, Eric's already working closely with the secondary principals as we can all imagine, most of the questions come up at the secondary level with this. So we, we were kind of doing it before it even starts, so we'll make sure to do that. And we're happy to report back to the board on that as well. Uh, it is a, you know, probably the biggest shift, Eric, you've pointed this out, probably the biggest shift is the dress code. So we're going to see how it goes. I, again, I think a lot of the things that were sort of in the traditional dress code weren't really being enforced anyway because of that uncomfortability people have. So, um, so I, I'll be interested to see how it goes, but I feel pretty good about it. Some other changes are, um, I think there's a higher level of accountability in the sense of parent communication piece. So with any suspension, there's, you know, there's a due process element that there has to be communication with families. Uh, but we have put in some layers of communication around us, like, you know, teacher removal of a student to either, um, a silent reflection area or in-school suspension, that there's a required parent communication. The administrator either facilitates or does. Um, and, and if it is a kid regular thing, I think the number's four, Eric?
Yes.
For those removals, that there's a required meeting. Those things weren't in our old code. We kind of modeled that after a few districts, but then we kind of made it our own a little bit too, because some of those districts that had that then had like an automatic obstacle suspension, which we didn't feel.
Right.
Was what we wanted to do. But just speaking as a parent, if, if my son was removed from a class, I would certainly want to have a meeting and find out what's going on or if it was like some regular thing or, you know, i- if it was something I need to work on with him or some communication issue or whatever it is, like we've got to do that. And so, uh, I honestly think that's probably one of the bigger changes in there. Most of the language came from NISBA. Uh, NISBA has been doing like an overhaul of this language over the past couple of years, I think. And then Eric, uh, a, a big part that came from Mr. Wright is the, uh, the discipline levels and the different options that we have. It's still, an administrator still does have a prerogative to use kind of anything in that, so they're not required to go through like five steps before, uh, before they do a suspension. We wanted those in there because we wanted administrators to also have the flexibility. With that being said, students that we talked to wanted clarity on, on the, like the different levels, because one of the things students will say is, uh, you know, my friend did something and this other kid did something and they got totally different, you know, discipline. Now granted, they may not know the whole story, you know, all that kind of stuff, but we tried to provide a little bit of clarity on that and in terms of like, if you do this, these are the range of things that will happen. I do think the basis of this is a higher level of communication, especially students who are struggling and I'm, I'm really excited about that part. It's going to be more work, but it's the work we need to be doing because we talk about metrics. Students that are in sixth or seventh grade do going to like the, you know, to in-school suspension or a silent reflection room more often than their peers are, are more likely to not graduate if, if our data mirrors national data and we, we want the best graduation rates we can have. It doesn't mean that we're ignoring the problem, it means that we got to get all the adults around the table to solve it. Sorry for the long speech, there's various aspects of the code that I'm excited about. There's various aspects of the code that I'm excited about. So I just started talking. And Eric, feel free to run up to the microphone and cut me off. What other thoughts or questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
Do the teachers and administrators that you've gotten feedback from who are involved, do they believe that it is implementable and achievable or probably rhetorical, I would think that they would put, is there the main concern about any piece of it that, hey, this, this may, just may not be able to do this?
I think, I think one of the concerns that we received, so in New York's, I'm going to get this right, New York SAVE legislation, which was passed a long time ago, early 2000s, I think, it's the school safety package that requires building emergency plans, district safety plans, all that stuff. Also requires code of conducts. And one of the things that is in there is the right for a teacher or administrator to remove a substantially disruptive or violent student from a classroom. And so one of the pieces of feedback we got was, are we still able to do that or are we just going to have our classroom just disrupted sort of, you know, forever and ever because our hands are being tied? That's, that is not at all what we had in there. That still is completely a possibility. All that we're making sure is kind of on the other end, that the communication part happens. And that if it is a repeated thing, that, that a, that a, that a meeting, you know, with all the adults involved happened to put some sort of plan in place. Now we do that, but we're not, we probably weren't doing as consistently as we needed to. So Mike, in terms of what you're saying, in, in terms of implementation, probably, and I'm not talking about, you know, thousands of emails, but the couple of emails or comments we got were about implementing that.
Right.
And, and so a teacher will, and rightfully so, will say, well, I'm busy teaching my class, I can't like just get on the phone and call the parent. That's not what we're requiring. We're just requiring that the teacher communicates to the principal, this is why the student needs to be sent out and that they, and Eric, jump in and get this wrong, they discuss how the parent's going to be contacted. It's not like just a robo, a robo call.
Right, so, so basically these things that I think are the concerns that may come from principals, but I have come to the boss about the classification of it all. In terms of, of seeing it, we never this conversation throughout. So I sat down with the principals at the, at the secondary level and asked them whether they don't give it to the leadership and, and they said yes. But, you know, they, I'm sure they've gotten some questions, you know, since that point. So they've asked for some clarification.
Okay.
No answers and I'll leave them there.
Good. And along with that, is there, I'm assuming there's going to be some training certainly with the, you know, with the restorative practices and how we're going to manage all that, so that would be a piece of the summer training?
Yeah, there, there will be the training for that as I'm going, yeah.
Right, so training, training took place in June, it took place in March, November, and then the plan is, I just actually got, I just actually spoke with the consultants from Dutchess mediation today. And so what we're going to do is during our professional learning day in September, we're going to bring them in and then have a conversation with, with some of the teachers that attended the full training along with administration from both the, both secondary.
Good. So, you know, one of the things we, we wanted to make clear in the code is that the restorative practices is mentioned a lot, but it's not required. And, and we wanted to be really clear with that because we, and I think, Mike, your question's getting right at this, we don't want people doing it who don't have a comfort level doing it for sure. It's kind of like, it's kind of like the one-to-one model in a sense, just because all the students at the high school have a Chromebook next year, doesn't mean their, every lesson they do in every class is something that's like a Google Classroom or something that's online. You know, we, we're, we don't want that. Like, everything is not going to go through a restorative practice, but we've already started doing it this past year and we wanted that reflected in the code. We had some pretty, I think, difficult issues that I think were handled in a different way this past year because of that. So we wanted our code to reflect that. I think that's kind of the message that we're trying to put out there, that this is a kind of a gradual change and one that we want people to feel that they're trained and supported in doing, for sure. Much like at the elementary end, it's not quite like restorative practices, but, you know, we just had a bunch of teachers do responsive classroom this past week. And in, you know, every teacher, I visited a couple of times, every teacher in that group is a veteran teacher. And, you know, I, I, I heard really positive reviews from the training and they were all taking stuff away, you know, despite the fact they've been running their classes for 10, 15, you know, 20 years. So I, I think sometimes finding these tools that help do this community ability and conversation stuff when you need to in your class is a skill that needs to be refreshed or taught. But that, I think that, I think that is a concern that we've been talking through with teachers and administrators and will reinforce at the beginning of the year and we'll have principals reinforce that and then clarifying the dress code a little bit. Those have been the two main things. I think the comfort level is pretty high with the rest. The other thing we're going to do is we will have monthly data meetings with all our abilities, but at the secondary level especially, we'll be looking at student discipline data. Just like Anthony, I liked during the goal conversation you talking about, that we're also tracking restorative circles that are held and, you know, when we do that, but we want to be looking at all that data, not in a gotcha way, but just in a supportive way again, like what are we seeing, what kids need support? So anyway, that's, there's been a lot of talk amongst all of us on the inside about it.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. We don't vote now, right?
No.
Okay. All right, any motion to adjourn to executive session?
So moved.
Second. Comments, questions? It's going to be in the main library, so you can ask while this door and over.
This is Chromebook central for the rollout, there's like a thousand Chromebooks in there. So.
All of the papers? All right, opposed, motion carried.
Do I bring Anthony?
So.
Feel free.
Yes.
Thank you for your patience. Before we get started with the rest of the agenda, I would like to request a moment of silence for a couple of former Beacon employees who have recently passed. The first one is Margaret Berry, who retired as serving as a school nurse for JV Forestville Bottom School for over 30 years. Alan Rush Mickey, who retired as a business teacher at Beacon High School. Nancy Riker, who retired as an attendance teacher. And Eleanor Nora Rinal, who retired as the head librarian after 31 years. Please rise. Thank you. All right, and in reviewing the agenda, there are two corrections and they are changed on board docs. The first correction is 14.02, the attendance was corrected to minutes. And in 14.03, the non-instructional F4, it was a salary correction, there was a cross out with the adjusted salary. So moving on, do we have any student or school presentations? CNN, we're going to go to parent groups, open to the public. We're going to go to superintendent's report. All right. I just wanted to wait a little bit.
I know, what's going on?
I just have a little picture tour of some of the work happening this summer and so a lot, there'll be a lot of cool pictures of the Capitol project from last week. Save your technical questions for, for when our facility director's here, but I, I'm sort of kidding, but we will ask him to come to our next board meeting to do more informal updates, but I will show you what's happening. We have lights behind the high school.
Wow.
Look at that. Big crane, got to get the cool trucks in there. And that is the locker, that's locker room that's being worked on. That is our science lab, right, Emery?
Yes.
Yep. This is our home career, home career room, which we're very, very excited about. So back to the Capitol project, just some updates for the Capitol project. Couple aspects of it are a little behind and so I'm, I'm going to do a more formal communication with the committee when we're a little bit more certain, like, you know, when that end date is. The, you know, fall sports start next week. The field will not be done by that, as you can tell by those pictures, but they are making a lot of progress. Even though we had a very dry summer, way, way back in the spring, we had a lot of rain, had to lay things a little bit and they, we needed more fill to, to kind of build up the field and getting the fill in took a little bit longer than expected. So we feel right now that the field will be a few weeks delayed and that, you know, sometime in September, not past mid-September, but hopefully early, early to mid-September we'll be done. But I'll know a little bit more probably in the next week or so about when that completion date is. But a lot is happening right now, there's a lot of things happening. And Anthony, you said you drive past it how often?
Every once in a while. I have two ladies that walk behind, so I take my car in the back like I'm a construction worker and I just sit in the car and kind of watch. Today I had my two boys and they were like, oh, look at that, that big machine going. So they had the, it was funny because they had the, they were leveling out, they had this huge machine, a grater, right? And then they had this big, heavy wheel, what is that called?
Sort of like a roller?
The roller, the huge heavy wheel going and my son was, and then they had this thing vibrating, compacting.
Vibratory.
Yeah, my, my son was like, can we sit and watch this one? I was like, can we go now? He was like, but it was awesome, it was big goal.
So classrooms that I showed are on track for the beginning of the school year, which is great. And we do have one delay in a lot, in many of our elementary classrooms, there is going to be a new univensator put in. And the manufacturer that makes them, what they shut one of their plants or they tried to combine two plants, so there's a delay. So our hope is that we are installing those, that we will be installing them after the school year. Once again, because some are starting to come in, so there might be some rooms ready to roll, but the classrooms will be ready, it'll just be this part and that they will be installed after school hours in the evening, probably mid-September. So there's been a couple of delays, but a lot of the rest of the project's on track. Roofing is on track, so we're very, very pleased. I'll be talking with Anthony and Meredith about, you know, board tours of the facilities just because of all this work being completed. Let's figure out a way to do it like, you know, right at the beginning of the school year for especially the, the projects that we can see as much as we can right at the beginning. So I'll work on that schedule because I know you'd love to see the finished product. And just a quick update on some of the PD that's been happening, we had two teachers, Don Hammond, Luanne Joyce, attend the Cloud Institute for Sustainability Education. That was, you know, discussed back during budget time and we had our PD plan. And one of the teachers was a member of the Sustainability Committee, I think both will be now, but they were learning about ways to integrate sustainability into curriculum and we'll be bringing that knowledge back to the district. And this summer, we had high school students work as part of our technology department. So there they are right up there and they've been doing an outstanding job helping get all of the massive work that people like Mr. Damcheck to my right get done. And so they've been helping out, getting Chromebooks ready, getting the interactive boards ready and just kind of doing whatever else comes up. And so it's our first time doing that and it's been a great success. And I would have pictured some of our full-time technology folks, but they refused because they didn't know what I was going to do with the pictures.
It's a wise technique.
But this picture here, it doesn't look right on the screen, but that is some of their work. So you see that screen back there, we now have one of those screens in every single one of our high school classrooms. And ready to go. And so, you know, the question about PD, you know, we'll be offering a lot of PD for high school teachers, so they're ready for that, much like we did middle school last year. But this, this one is, we're really excited about. It's been way too long for those teachers to wait for this, so it's kind of past due, but having one in every single classroom. My experience, I honestly, working in other districts in other high schools, high school teachers really make use of these a lot. And so I'm very excited to that. And you see on the table in front of the screen, lots of Chromebooks stacked up, that is just some of them. We have a thousand Chromebooks ready to roll here at the high school for some time in September. Mr. Keely and the, and technology team do an amazing job, really kind of put it all together this summer, but they'll come out with the rollout plan for that. But we're very excited to expand the one-to-one, just wanted you to see that visual. And then this was our, our elementary teachers. We had 20 of our teachers, we had 10 teachers from other Dutchess districts, I think primarily Arlington. Why do we partner with other districts? Because it really reduces the cost, we're able to run it through VOCs and get, get state aid back, both on, you know, the money that the consultant gets for doing it and also all the rest of the costs with the training. So this is responsive classroom, this is the model that helps elementary teachers build community in their classroom and build structures, positive structures. We had about five teachers from each of our elementary schools. Our plan for this, as you may remember, is to do this over the next few years and try to get every elementary teacher trained in this model. The reviews that came back from this training, it was a four-day training, were, were just very high, very excellent. People really appreciated how well-planned it was and whatnot. And so a lot of things have been happening this summer, a lot of new things, which we're very excited about. Coming up, we have the Engagement Institute, so we have our administrative team and about 15 to 20 teachers and we're going to be working with an expert in student engagement and coming up with that district definition and some plans to roll it out. After that, we have the first two days of the Dignity Framework Training, which is our administrators and equity teacher leaders in all of our schools. That's on, I want to say 26 and 27. There'll be four more days of that training throughout the school year, it's a six-day training. Our goal for that is to also do that for a couple of more years. Dignity Framework is a model that trains schools in equity and diversity work and finding ways to honor and respect all cultures, races, ethnicities and abilities. So we're very excited about that training. We have our leadership retreat on the day after that and that's where we kind of set our course for the year and get, get ready with all these initiatives. And, and then we have new teacher orientation with a bunch of rock stars we're bringing in on August 29th. So we're very busy kind of once that all starts and we have a board meeting right in the middle of that, so we're, it's an exciting time. And the one thing I forgot, I, I sent this off to Mike and forgot to add the picture, but we also had most of our administrative team attend the two-day NISCUS, it's the state superintendent organization. Most of our administrative team attended the two-day Diversity Thought Leader Institute in Ithaca. And, and so we, that was a very productive two days where we learned a lot from both keynote speakers and also breakout sessions. So I'm a big believer in getting a lot of the learning and reflecting done in the summertime because I feel like that's when we're more open to thinking about our practice and changing our practice and so we're making the most of the summer. Thanks to the board for supporting this work, we're getting a lot of positive feedback on all ends. And I really appreciate your support of this in all the meetings prior that built up to this. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
These boards that we have, the electronic boards in the high school, what system are they running on, what makes, manufacturers, etc., if we know, somebody here knows that?
Dell?
Yes.
Dell.
What's that?
Dell. Dell.
Dell, it's all a Dell system?
Yes.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, committee reports, including board comments. Craig?
We will change the schedule this year for the Public Relations Advocacy Legislative Committee. Instead of, in our first year, we pretty much tried to stick to a monthly schedule. We don't think we need to do that, so we'll be thinking of a probably reduced schedule for this year, key in large part to the legislative issues calendar. We do want to take a look at the website, that's under old business because we did have discussion with Mr. Keely in terms of coming up with different models that might be better looking or more able to deliver information. So if we could reiterate- we could reiterate that agenda and come up with a time that's convenient for everybody, then that would probably be the nice thing to look at there. And, uh, of course, Mike Rukowski and I are happy that Kristen Flynn took the chairmanship of the Facilities and Operations Committee. And, uh, we have, uh, had a good meeting before, so Kristen can pick it up and run with that. Uh, for my part, I had a nice summer vacation and, uh, clearing my head of memories of vacationing and trying to give that comeback to do what we do here. Thank you.
Laura?
Yeah, um, I just wanna say I'm really excited about, um, the idea of adding sustainability to our district goals. I think that it, um, it sort of brings us up to the present and, and carries us into the future. And I think that, uh, it was definitely the one thing that was missing. Aside from that, I've, uh, yeah, I have no other business, but I am really thrilled about that.
Awesome. Thank you. Melissa?
Um, I'm just really excited in general for school to start. Not just because I'm looking forward to getting back to the routine and everything, but, um, I just feel like there's a lot of enthusiasm in this room, especially from Matt. Um, Matt seems super psyched. And Dr. Bill as well. I'm excited for this school year. I'm really, I'm looking forward to it. That's all.
Mike?
So, not the chair, as listed in the, uh,
We're gonna adjust it, so.
We didn't, we didn't report it out until tonight.
So Kristen will report it out for the Facilities Committee, but, uh, I agree, there's a lot of energy, a lot of positive things that are going on with the budget process. We had, you know, new offerings and we have new, uh, you know, teachers and we have the, you know, the facilities upgrades, which I hopefully was just gonna all come together and just, uh, carry us forward. So I appreciate all the hard work and the, and the leadership that Matt's given, pulling this together, you know, and re, because that's what it takes in order to get us all going in the same direction. So it's, it's, um, I'm really looking forward to this year. Thank you.
Anthony?
Uh, I apologize, I can't be there in person. And, uh, I also wanna echo the appreciation for all the hard work. No one should ever say that, uh, that the admini, that the administration and the, um, instructional staff, non-instructional staff, um, aren't doing anything over the summer. Appreciate it.
All right. Kristen?
Uh, yep. So we had our first facilities, okay, I guess it counts as our first facilities meeting, uh, last week. And, um, yeah, I'm really excited to, it's been to take over the chairmanship of this, uh, committee. It's, I feel like a lot of, originally I joined because it was before we hired, um, we had hired Matt, but he hadn't started yet. And we had a capital project vote. I thought it'd be important to really understand the capital project so that we could communicate it and, um, make sure that the vote passed, you know, to support our new hire. Um, and I didn't know how long I would stay on it, so I think, um, as surprised as anybody, that I'll be moving forward with it. But it is, it's a really exciting, uh, committee where a lot of the physical environment that our students spend time in is what we think about. And, um, we'll be meeting the Wednesday after the first meeting each month. So we'll put out the calendar for that. And one of the things, more of like a business aspect of it is, um, I'd like to see us for our committee really develop kind of, uh, long-term goals, intermediate, intermediate goals, and then meeting goals, so that we have a real focus every time we get together. Because each of us is taking time out of our schedule to, um, to, you know, make sure that we spend time doing something meaningful and moving us closer to those goals. So I think making sure we have our agenda and our materials ahead of time is a goal of mine this year, that we have our questions ready to go and that we can have the right people in the room each time we meet. Um, is really, you know, just I think building off of a lot of the existing work that we've been doing. And, uh, I also am just really excited. This is very, I, I, I'm so appreciative, but it's also really gratifying, I think. Just, um, the amount of time and effort, the people that we're putting in place and also the investment that we're making in our staff. Um, you know, we can do many things to the physical plant of, uh, these schools, but the people that come in and out of them every day are the ones who really make a difference in our kids' lives. And the more tools we can give them to work with is, um, just going to, I think, pay, have the biggest return on investment. So I think what's happened this summer is really exciting. And, um, I'm glad that the teachers feel that, um, we're supporting them and the staff.
I'm gonna use my board comments to kind of distribute information and board information and stuff. So the first one is, a couple of meetings ago, our last meeting asked about, uh, the NISBA convention. Does anybody know if they can or cannot go?
What are, what are the dates again?
October twenty-fourth through the twenty-seventh, twenty-sixth?
I'm gonna go.
Kristen, can I? Anybody have an extra pen?
When, when do you need to know?
Today. No, I, I'm being facetious, but the sooner the better, because then we could get the room set up and all that. And what happens is the longer we wait, the longer we're gonna be away from the convention. So because it's in Rochester, there's, I know Rochester is one of the big five cities and stuff, but there's not a lot of areas to stay when close to the facility. So the sooner we could get that, so Kelly could book it, it's gonna be better. So Kristen, I'm gonna put as a yes.
I can go.
For a yes.
I won't be, I won't be able to go.
You'll be able to go? I'm gonna be able to go. But at least I, then I could start narrowing down and unpacking just the one or two board members that don't know. So Mike, you're a no?
I'm a tentative.
They're gonna put the maybe. So you want me to hand pack you?
Well, I just, it all depends on how much time off I have left by, uh, over end of October.
All right.
Also, I'm, I might not be using a room, so if we get a room reserved, then I've got it.
Craig, you're a maybe?
I'm a maybe, yeah. Probably is.
Anthony?
I'm gonna be a no. I can't even stay in Beacon.
I can't, I can't even stay as we, uh, just.
Oh, Jane. Okay. All right. The second is, um, for a board, uh, self-evaluation. We would like to, um, purchase through, um, Super Evolve to do a, a board evaluation. Um, as of, it's the same board members going into nineteen-twenty as it was for eighteen-nineteen. So that is gonna be something that is gonna be coming our way. In the past, we've done the, um, board self-evaluation from NISBA. It was really cumbersome and came in the butt for the president and/or whoever helped out trying to compile that information. And it hasn't been a steady practice. So, um, I think that if we have a better system in place, we can make it more of a steady practice where we're not doing it that one time a year. Maybe we could, and I think the last time we did it was a mid-year. Um, it wasn't an end of the year. We did it kind of mid-year to see how we can start moving, uh, better. Am I remembering that correctly?
I think so.
You were not, I don't think. Maybe you were. So, so that's gonna be coming out. That will be Super Evolve. Once we get it purchased and stuff, you'll get the same, the same, it's similar to the Super Evolve system that we use for, uh, math evaluation. So we'll, we'll be working on that piece and that should be coming soon. So that's an FYI. It's coming our way.
There'll be prizes for the ones who get it.
Oh my gosh, I'm not.
Don't.
What was it?
Maybe there'll be prizes for those.
Laura was doing it on her phone from vacation because she didn't realize that it wasn't like.
I did, I thought it was a hard deadline.
Yeah. She's a former recorder. You can't give her a deadline and not expect.
We're, we do have a board agenda set up. I believe Meredith sent that out, correct? Is that the?
Retreat?
The board retreat?
Yeah.
That is August twenty-seventh, I wanna say?
Yes. I thought twenty-sixth.
Oh, God. Is it twenty-sixth?
Twenty, twenty-seventh or twenty-sixth? I'm trying to, that's why I'm trying to kind of.
Really, when it is?
Just a date. Right, hold on.
I said yes to that, then I was wrong.
Sixteenth. September sixteenth.
I thought it was September sixteen. September sixteen?
That sounds right.
September sixteenth?
That's what it looks like.
Oh, jeez. I'm way ahead on that one. Was it possibility August? No?
No, not for, not for me.
Oh, okay.
What time, is that, that's this weekend, right?
That's why I'm bringing it up, just so we're making sure we're on the same page. So that's September sixteenth. All right, board retreat.
Oh, yeah, okay. September.
What else did I have? I think that's all I had for follow-up for the board members. But I am super excited with the capital project and the field getting done. And I, I do feel, feel in the community as well. Parents are ready to get their kids back to school. And it's going great. I think that it's been, the, the organization of it looks, is, looks like it's right on time for most part. And it's not gonna interrupt the education of our students going into September. So that, that's the best part there, so. All righty. Going next to, old business? So there is, this is the third time. Um, there's a motion, um, to approve official school district newspapers. The last, uh, two meetings, there was, it was tougher quorum and there wasn't a agreement. So I would like to make, I'm gonna, before I ask for a motion to be approved for this official school district newspapers, I'm gonna ask to make an amendment to the motion. But I think I need the motion first.
Motion.
I need a motion to approve this official school district newspapers as listed. Craig? Anthony seconded. I would ask to make an amendment to the motion to approve the Poughkeepsie Journal and what was the cheapest? The Highland Current was cheaper than Beacon Free Press?
Yes.
And the Highland Current and remove the Beacon Free Press. So I'd like to make a motion to remove the Beacon Free Press from the motion.
So. Oh, I'm sorry.
I think Anthony made that.
I made the motion.
Second.
Kristen made the second.
No, no, she, she, um, I was sorry. I should've said moved.
Comments or questions about the amendment? All those in favor to the amendment?
Aye.
Opposed?
Why did we?
Wait a minute.
Oh, what, Anthony?
I said, why did we picked up Beacon Free Press and not the Highland Current? Why don't we pick both the Highland Current and the Beacon Press? What's the thinking behind that?
We had the discussion before it was a class aspect.
How many papers do we have to have?
Two.
And one of them has to be daily.
Poughkeepsie Journal.
Is there another daily paper besides Poughkeepsie Journal?
No. All right.
So what, your amendment is to, uh, remove the Beacon Free Press?
Correct.
Yeah. So you're calling for a vote on that amendment?
Correct. All those in favor of the amendment to remove the Beacon Free Press from the motion?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
One, two, three, four, five. Five to two for the amendment. Need a motion to approve the amendment of, as amended, for it to be the Poughkeepsie Journal and the Highland Current.
So, second.
You already have them.
Well, we have the motions. All those in favor of it?
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried seven-zero. So the official papers of the district are the Poughkeepsie Journal and the Highlands Current. All right. I need a motion to approve, no, sorry. New business. This is a discussion. I think, Matt, you were gonna describe this?
Yep. Sorry, I was pulling it up. Um, the Board of Regents, uh, added a requirement, uh, mid-summer to school districts, district safety plans and code of conducts. And it is an MOU, um, about the roles and responsibilities of security staff in all districts. My understanding of the background of this is, was primarily directed at districts that employ school resource officers to make sure that it spelled out what they should, should and shouldn't be doing regarding student discipline. Uh, but, but the regulation does ask for an MOU encompassing all folks who work with security in a district. So, um, so this is, so what I have to do with this is, uh, I need to, um, I need to solicit, uh, feedback from the community and from some specific, uh, offices laid out in, in the regs, like, uh, um, the county attorney and, uh, the police department and things like that. So, uh, it's not incredibly specific about how much time. I'm gonna give it the next two weeks. Also, what I'll do is put an email out with this MOU to our community and also send, uh, letters to those agencies that I just mentioned, and there's a, a couple others. And, uh, and then bring it back. I'm not certain this, the way it's written, we'll get a lot of feedback. That's just my, I guess, my opinion, but, um, and then I would bring it back, uh, for the board to include into the school district safety plan that we'd like to adopt on August twenty-sixth. I'm sorry, this is a little confusing. It's sort of an odd process for this to be thrown into the kind of like the middle of the summer and the middle of this whole thing. The reason I'm bringing it to you is I, I felt it would be odd, even though you're not voting on this tonight, I felt it would be odd to be going out to the public saying, I want feedback on this when the board hasn't seen it. And I wanted to just put it in a meeting. So it's, it's right there in front of you. I don't know if I'm doing this justice. I, I've struggled to understand this in the process. And for a while, I thought that we actually weren't included in this, and then it turns out that we are. So I'd like to get the public input part started. And so I kind of just need to see if you all are okay with that in an informal sort of way. You're not actually like voting on accepting this until probably the next board meeting, when we try to incorporate it into the school district safety plan.
But prior to the next board meeting, you're gonna make the public aware of this aspect?
Love to do it tomorrow.
Okay.
This is a requirement, right?
Yes.
We have to do this.
Yes.
And we have our attorneys that have worked with us on this.
Yes, our attorneys wrote this MOU. Uh, the one part, uh, I, I emphasized in the MOU that our security monitors, uh, really assist with safety issues. And so I wanted to make sure that that language is in there. Uh, we've talked before in meetings that, um, while they certainly are present when code, you know, when there are code of conduct violations and they're involved in, you know, writing a student up at times, their primary role is students, or safety for all in the building, not monitoring minor infractions. We feel that that's the educator's job. So, um, so I wanted to emphasize the safety aspect in the MOU. That was kind of the only little tiny thing I told our attorney. So this is what they came up with. I think this is kind of the same for every district that, you know, does this. Essentially, they, the state wanted to be crystal clear that SROs, which we don't employ here, or security monitors, are not the one imposing discipline on students, period. That's what this is all about. I think it probably came from a couple of districts, maybe they had an issue with this, and so they're doing the, the blanket approach. So that's what the MOU is. Um, and I wanna go out to the public in the next few days to do this gathering of input and, and then try to incorporate it into the district safety plan.
Cool.
So is a, is there any feedback that you all have right now? Is that okay? Okay, I'll get started. Thank you.
All right, the consent agenda. The use of the consent agenda to promote support of education, make more effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover those relatively routine matters which are included. Any member of the board who wishes to discuss individually or a particular piece of business on the consent agenda may so indicate and the item will be considered and voted on separately, thus preserving the right of all board members to be heard on any issues. Is there anything on the consent agenda a board member would like pulled? Hearing none. I need a motion to approve, um, consent agenda items one, uh, fourteen point oh-one through fourteen point one-two.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Comments or questions?
One question. There's not, there's not enough to pull it. Um, in the, in the, um, fourteen point oh-three, talk about, you know, bus drivers. Uh, you know, that was a big, and how, what's our status? I know it was, it's always been a big issue about getting bus drivers and with the school, you know, schools starting up and the land starting, how are we doing in that realm? how are we doing in that realm?
So, right now, we have a sufficient amount of bus drivers. We have some school bus monitors that are getting their road tests, and they're getting training. Ron, Mackey's been really good about going to job fairs. In fact, he just emailed me today again to go to a different job fair. He's going to the BOCS across the river to try to recruit people. We'll put the sign back out on the bus when school starts. So, we have enough for now, so it's not a crisis.
Good. All right, thank you.
Any other discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried seven-zero. And I knew I forgot something in my board comments, so I'm gonna say it now, because it was so important. Over two weeks ago, Beacon High School hosted the naturalization ceremony for new citizens. So, there were citizens from Dutchess County and Orange County. I think there were over a hundred new citizens in Beacon, and they asked, we hosted it, so they asked for a little welcoming, and Matt couldn't make it, so I did attend, and I just said, you know, "We're happy to host an event like this, you know, we're bringing, this really meets our board goals of, you know, diversifying and also communicating with our community and stuff." And it was super exciting to see. It was something that if you've never just went to, to even sit in the back and feel the chill in the room and aura, it was really cool. But it was also nice that Beacon hosted it, and it was for new citizens of Orange County and Dutchess County. So, it was really neat, and I wanted to say it, and I can't believe I forgot it, but I remembered before I left, so.
And speaking of cool ceremonies, August graduation, Monday, August nineteenth at ten, and we do have several students graduating, and this one's near and dear to my heart as someone who did not finish the doctorate when I should've and missed the whole fancy ceremony and had to do the much lower-scale ceremony. It still counts, just like anyone else's diploma, and so, we're really excited to celebrate with those students and their families next week.
All right. So, I need a motion to adjourn the meeting. Was that Anthony?
Yeah.
Laura, second. Comments or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried seven-zero, and it is nine o'clock.